The time has come for the May 6, 2019, regular city council meeting. Roll call, please.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Mozio.
Here.
Alderman Villalobos.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
Mayor.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present. Can the two chiefs of police and police of fire, please join us to lead us in the pledge? Police of, chief of police and chief of fire or police and fire, please lead us in the pledge. All stand, please. Thank you, gentlemen. Before I start the mayor's comments, I'm going to ask everyone under diocese, please stand, and for all of you, a moment of silence for this past week's events. Alderman. Thank you. Good evening and welcome, everyone. Our thoughts and prayers are with all those affected by Friday's night tragedy. I want to thank all of our first responders, public works, the thirty different agencies who aided, including the area fire department, for sending their support. A special thank you to the Burns Construction, a company who did an amazing job with supplying Let us continue to keep those families in our prayers. Last Tuesday and Wednesday, I was in Springfield to promote Waukegan. On Tuesday, I was with the Illinois Municipal League for Lobby Day. On Wednesday, I gave testimony at the Illinois House Executive Committee on Casino Expansion with mayors from Rockford and Danville, along with the City of Chicago. On Friday, I spoke about our need for state capital infrastructure bill at the Illinois Senate Transportation Subcommittee that was held at College of Lake County University Center. We are actively promoting Waukegan with our various state partners. Special Olympics. Cop on the Rooftop is a fundraiser to support Special Olympics on Friday, May the thirteenth, from 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. or at the Three Dunkin' Donuts located in the cities and city of Waukegan, Washington and Green Bay, Green Bay and West, and along with the one at Fountain Square. Please come out and assist for this good cause. Happy anniversary to the Waukegan Symphony Orchestra, who will be celebrating on May 12th at 7:00 p.m. at Trap Auditorium. We're very proud of them and excited to hear the beginning of the new year. Ramadan to all celebrating, on behalf of the city of Waukegan, may this Ramadan be filled with joy, health, and peace. Upcoming events, Waukegan High School award-winning music department will hold concerts over the next two weeks at Trap Auditorium at 7:00 p.m. with the Mariachi Festival on May 10th, band on the 15th, and jazz on the 17th. Lake County Circuit Court Clerk will hold a mobile passport event on Saturday, May 11th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. here at City Hall. This event will take you through the whole process of getting or renewing your passport, including getting your picture taken. Lake County Community Concert Association presents Alliance Brass at Trap Auditorium, also on May 11th at 7:30 p.m. Join me on the 34th Annual Waukegan Main Street Lunch with the Mayor next Monday, May 13th, at Glen Flor Country Club. Limited tickets are still available at waukeganmainstreet.org. The Genesee Theater present Burden Cummings, Patton Oswalt, The Buddy Holly Story, and the sold-out pen and tele show, all in the next two weeks. See their website for dates and tickets. Three Brothers Theater hosts two new shows this month, including the world premiere and hilarious Farce Noises Off. See their website for the date and tickets. Finally, May Art Walk is Saturday, May 18th, and will include art exhibits in the Waukegan Harbor, at the Waukegan Harbor, Waukegan High School, in addition to everything in the downtown arts entertainment district. Thank you, and that's it. All right. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman May, to approve the irregular meeting minutes from May 11th, April 15th, 2019. Any questions? All those approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Villalobos, to approve the special city council meeting committee of the whole appropriation on this budget, here in minutes, April 22nd, 2019. Any questions? All those approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Valco, to approve the committee of the whole executive session meeting minutes from February 19th to 2019. Any questions? All those approve?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item three, audience time. Madam Clerk.
Yes, audience time. First one up, Margaret Carrasco, and you have three minutes.
She's coming in the door. Margaret? All right, Margaret, you got the mic, Margaret? Bring the queen with you. That's a beautiful, I don't know the technical name of it, but it's beautiful. Tiara? Tiara, all right. Crown, there it is. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, just really quick, I was going to have our muse entrepreneur, Golly Mendoza from Fiesta Box, and I have some her flyers here to pass out, but today we just wanted to all personally invite all the beautiful young ladies in Waukegan. As you know, last year we had an awesome beauty pageant, in which we had about twenty-three girls participate down by the lake, and it was a huge success.
That's amazing.
And mayor, this year we want to do even better, a lot better. A hundred girls. We have a hundred girls in Waukegan, in which we are giving them the opportunity, and I brought my model here, if you could just turn around in the middle, we are giving away these cotillion dresses to every young lady in Waukegan that would like to celebrate their cotillion, an elegant cotillion, out of this room like none other there's been. Quinceañera, to celebrate, perhaps maybe for many different reasons, financially for the most part, a lot of young ladies don't, her families have other commitments, are unable to dish out $20,000 for an event, for it to celebrate their special birthday. This is very cultural in many ethnic backgrounds, and we invite everyone. And so I have some flyers here, which our queen will pass out to those who are interested. And we have just one slight problem here. I had put in my applications for the event from last in the fall, and I would want to believe that my applications, my event applications for this and other cool events in Waukegan, put on by Waukegan residents, not people from Milwaukee, Wisconsin, not people from Chicago, but with people in Waukegan promoting local Waukegan businesses, our local beauty salons, makeup artists, the whole nine yards, that my applications were not somehow given to someone else in a different name, my money that I paid was not transferred to another group. So I am confident, mayor, that you will look into that, and if by chance that was incorrectly done, it will be corrected, because I would not want to be the person to go in front of the families, hundreds of thousands of people, that are looking forward to this first-ever cotillion, mega cotillion event ever, to take place, where here in the city of Waukegan, okay? Thank you very much, mayor.
Thank you. I believe it's GW Mendoza? Is there a GW Mendoza? GW Mendoza? Josh Beadle?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, and everybody in the audience today. My name's Josh Beadle, I'm with Waukegan Main Street, and I just wanted to update you all on a couple of things that have been happening in our downtown. First of all, I need to promote our event coming up, a week from today, the 34th Annual Lunch with the Mayor, down at Glen Flor Country Club. As the mayor indicated, there are some seats still available. I also would like to let everyone know, we had Ace Hardware sponsored an event this Saturday, from 10:00 to 2:00, a barbecue fest. Ace was there in attendance, as I mentioned, but so was A Cuban Experience, and Oak Street Health, and Family Piano Company, and we saw about 250 people come downtown. Finally, I'd like you all to know about, excuse me, Natural Balance Massage Therapy, which has been down here for about nine years. They have planned a large expansion, and they'll be hosting an open house on May 18th, with a ribbon cutting at 1:30, so I invite you all to attend. Thank you all very much. And if you are interested in anything happening downtown, I've got a little flyer.
Thank you. Jack Dye.
Good evening, I've talked up here a handful of times, I'm Jack Dye. And I wanted to keep it a little short this time, I've thrown a lot of facts, a lot of numbers that a lot of people, vented my frustration to the city, to the city council, about financial problems and financial solutions. I still am a big believer in economic development for Waukegan. The two things I want to talk about, first of all, I'd really like to see this council, the new council's gonna be set. I wish you all the best. It's a great opportunity for the city of Waukegan to get new blood up here, to mix with the old, and really do a good job for the city of Waukegan, and I pray, and I hope you all do a really good job. With that said, I really implore you to look at the budget. I know the mayor's doing the best he can with our budget, it's very difficult in a city of our size, with growing pension costs and growing operating costs. We are running the third year straight, or proposed third year straight of a deficit, and I know that the economy's doing really well, and we're tapping into some of our reserves to make this stuff happen. There's a lot of things that are happening that are needed, however, we have to plan for that rainy day. I don't want to be the Debbie Downer, and I don't want to thump my chest and pound on this, pound a gavel and say, hey, we need to do this, but we really do. I just got my tax bill up, and my taxes are climbing almost to the amount what I'm paying for my mortgage for my home. And that's not uncommon to myself, it's common to most people in this room. And it's unfortunate, this is a great city with a lot of great opportunity, we have a lot of legacy costs, we need to address. I think that if we can stop spending, borrowing money for infrastructure, and start saving some money, start paying it cash as we go, we'd be a little bit stronger financially, and I hope that we can make those decisions. The other thing I want to talk about, the economic development section of things, I ran for office, some of you guys know that, and one of the things I was really focusing on was economic development. That didn't play to some people very well, I was labeled as against economic development in some which way, shape, or form, because I'm not for a casino at Fountain Square. And the reason I'm not for a casino in Fountain Square is not because I'm against gambling, not because I'm against moving Waukegan forward, I don't believe it's right for our town. I believe there's a lot of other ways to move this town forward, and I believe that there is, a lot of people feel that way. I had a little bit of a social media conversation with one of our state reps, and she didn't understand that there's a lot of people who feel the same way as me. So while I'm getting up here, I'm not trying to beat my chest and tell you that I'm right and you're wrong, I'm trying to explain, give you the voice of some of the people you may not hear from in the city. I was knocking on lots of doors, I'm sure a lot of everyone up there, and everyone who won the race has knocked on lots of doors, and a lot of those conversations did not include a casino for the city of Waukegan. Not saying that'd be the world's worst thing, that this city's gonna burn if it happens, but I really want us to think that through. And I would like to charge every Alderman who won their election, to really sit down and look at that budget carefully, look at the numbers, look at where we need to tighten our belts a little bit, look where we can save some money.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, have a great night.
Thank you. Ralph Peterson? Ralph Peterson? Ralph Peterson? Oh, he's not here? Oh, Celeste Flores.
Evening, council, my name is Celeste Flores, and I work for Faith in Place, we're an environmental organization that has an office here in Waukegan. We work statewide to get all people of faith to be leaders in taking care of our earth, and we are actually looking to hire here in Waukegan, part-time, so they would be working ten to twenty hours and be paying $15 an hour, and they have to be Waukegan residents, South Shore or Glendale Heights, so I just wanted to let you guys know, I'll pass out a flyer if you guys know anyone, they can email me, the contact person's actually my colleague, Veronica, since we have three locations, but it would be a great way for someone to supplement whatever they're doing, if they're going to college, or just looking for something, a little extra cushion, and they would be focusing on educating the community on energy efficiency, because we save money, and we help the environment if we're using less electricity, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Clyde McAmel.
Good evening. On Friday, we have seen, Waukegan has seen one of the deadly chemical explosions in this area, three dead, one still missing. I was on the scene in one hour this happened, and so was our first responders and the mayor. May I say, what a great job our first responders was, although by Waukegan Fire Department being sure staff, they had to call out other departments as far as Round Lake and north of Kenosha. I met with a couple of employees of the company, even one who was in there during the explosion. On Saturday, I was back on the scene, reporting and looking, taking pictures, although I made, afterwards I made it to the town hall meeting with U.S. Senator Tammy Duckworth, and in her opening statement, she asked for prayers for the city of Waukegan and the mayor, and which reasons for not showing up was that he was on the scene for the rescue. Lies, lies, lies. The real reason, the real truth of the matter, our money-grabbing mayor was at a fundraiser that was less than twenty feet away from the explosion, 3500 Sunset, the Tiki Room video slots. Now, at the time of explosion, less than twenty-four hours of the deadly event, just a couple steps away, I asked the citizens of Waukegan, was that ethical? This fundraiser should have been canceled, out of respect for the dead citizens, or even moved. There was a motion, which had been tabled, to waive the 150-feet ordinance for video gambling. There was, there's a lucky lady at 1423 Golf Road, that's been there for a couple of years. Then there's the Sunset House Family Restaurant, which is ninety-seven steps away, which I counted them, ninety-seven, I wear a size 12, ninety-seven steps away from there is, and right across the street is a church. And the Sunset House is a family restaurant. Now, I mean, an Alderman elect goes into a business who's operated for years, mainly off of video gambling, and telling them that they're going to allow the business to have a business license for gambling, which is ninety-seven steps away, to get gambling, which knock off the profit of one business, and I ask you, this city council meeting, or is this a gang, or wannabe gangsters? Money is the root to all evil. Thank you.
Thank you. Annette Darden.
Hi there. Annette Darden, Ninth Ward resident, been here about fifteen years, living here with my husband, we both came from different areas, I came from Milwaukee, he came from Chicago, and we're raising our family here, and we're very proud of Waukegan, I ran for local office, learned a lot of things along the way, and the one thing I've learned, one of the many things I learned, is that I'm very saddened by the civil unrest in our city, and what I've seen here at city council meetings every session, and during this audience time, I understand it's important for the people to bring their concerns to the council, sorry. Is that better? Okay. I understand the importance for the people to bring their concerns to the council, but the discord has affected us so deeply as a community, that we cannot even bring our own children to City Hall, to be a witness of this sacred process, and it's supposed to be, represent, you know, our community and our political process. Instead, we come for a show. As one man next to me said last session, let the games begin, which is very sad to me. I just pray for our city that we can come together to work for our betterment, that we all have better, we all have great ideas about what we see the city to be, but it makes an even better community when we can set aside our personal issues and do what's best for our neighborhoods and work together. Again, I use Daniella's Angels as an example of what we can all strive to be. They are a family that lost their beautiful daughter to leukemia at the age of sixteen, and they could be angry at God or others, and become resentful or depressed, but they chose to do the opposite, and to commemorate their daughter, and give back to the community, and make these little libraries, and then take them and donate to the community, the less fortunate people make baskets at Christmas time and so forth for them every year. And they're an example to me of what community is supposed to be, and it's just sad to me that people don't know those things, about what really is going on in our community, the positive things. They kept her legacy alive, and at the same time, they're making our city a better place. This unrest is bigger than us, and it's what we chose to, it's what we choose to do with it. The Medina family chose light and love and a positive road, and they chose to make Waukegan better. And that is what I choose, myself and for my family, and I hope that everyone else does too. I just don't want to see, and I refuse, I think that we should all refuse, to see our city go downhill.
Thank you. Diana Burdette. Diana Burdette.
Hello, everybody. Mayday presented us with new information. Dylan Matt, a professor of labor economics from the Roosevelt University, who provided us with details. Apparently, these sterilizing and chemical manufacturing companies like Medline and Vantage Chemicals are hiring temporary workers. They're loading them up with a year's worth of toxins over a two-week period, and then they're firing them. They're sending them off with no insurance, a higher incidence rate of cancer, probably several chronic issues, no job, no health insurance. This is happening, this isn't the only case that I've heard since then, I started digging in a little further, and I started finding more stories. These are the companies that are saying are our good neighbors. This is happening to our community members of Waukegan, Zion, Park City, North Chicago. On April 25th, an individual in a tractor caused injury to over thirty individuals, they leaked anhydrous ammonia in the residential area, an accident. Friday, May 3rd, AB Special T Silicon's, a facility that holds halogenated solvents, a highly toxic mutagen, exploded, causing damage to surrounding area buildings, two injured, three dead, and one still unaccounted for. Yet another accident. The Rowner Administration gutted the IEPA with cutbacks to funding and a cutback from 900 to 600 in personnel. What we are witnessing is the consequences of these cutbacks, deregulation, and minimal enforcement. It leaves our communities vulnerable. What we are witnessing is that our state environmental regulatory systems have been gutted and weakened. At the federal level, we are in the midst of an even bigger catastrophic deregulation. So the people of the state and the nation are left in the hands of local and county officials. It is now up to you to implement new systems to secure the safety of the people. The IEPA and the U.S. EPA have made it very clear that the Lake County residents do not matter to them. They have repeatedly said they are too busy taking care of the more affluent community of Willowbrook, to come into Lake County and test our air for a Class 1 human carcinogen and mutagen. I would like to know if the Vantage facility was compromised this past explosion, seeing as how the explosion was felt over 79,000 feet away, fifteen miles, and Vantage is just 3,000 feet away.
Dylan Burdette?
All right, I'm gonna talk to you about ETO, so I'm gonna talk real fast, sorry about that. In addition to its industrial uses, ethylene oxide is the main component in thermal barrack weaponry used by the U.S. military, also known as fuel-air explosives, among the most powerful non-nuclear weapons in our country's arsenal. Ethylene oxide is preferred as it has a shockwave effectiveness of five to one compared to dynamite. Thermal barrack weapons fueled by ethylene oxide react at such a high temperature that they literally cause the air to burn, setting fire to all structures in the immediate blast radius. The reaction moves at nearly Mach 6, burning as it goes. As for the effects, I'll quote here, "Those near the ignition point are obliterated, those at the fringe of the explosion are likely to suffer many internal and thus invisible injuries, including burst eardrums, crushed internal ear organs, severe concussions, ruptured lungs and internal organs, and possibly blindness. Also, shock and pressure waves cause minimal damage to brain tissue, it is possible that victims of fuel-air explosives are not rendered unconscious by the blast, but instead suffer for several seconds or minutes while they suffocate. Also, undetonated fuel-air explosives should prove as lethal to personnel, as lethal to personnel caught within the cloud as most chemical weapons. On an average day at Vantage, there's an equivalent to a 240-ton TNT bomb on site, and an 80-ton TNT bomb at Medline. Let me tell you what would happen there if there was an accident at either of those facilities, like there was at AB Silicones last Friday. At Vantage, the primary explosion would be a fireball of almost 300 feet across, causing third-degree burns to people within 1,000 feet, including those workers at Dynapar, ABC Supply, Gallagher, and other companies. The pressure wave would cause solid concrete structures within 500 feet to collapse, as well as most houses within a quarter mile, including the neighborhoods directly to the east, west, and south. This would cause approximately 270 casualties with additional injuries. At Medline, the primary explosion would be a fireball 100 feet across, causing third-degree burns." causing third-degree burns to workers at surrounding facilities, destroying every building within three hundred feet, such as inhabited facility, Fastenal and Precision Labs, including Route Forty-One to the east, along with any traffic on that road. This would cause approximately a hundred-and-ninety casualties with more injuries. Now, these are just estimates. In two thousand thirteen, an article in the Journal of Chemical Engineering Transactions noted that since nineteen ninety-four, the majority of explosions at ethylene oxide facilities have been due to accidents involving catalytic or dry scrubbers. This is the same scrubber technology that's been vaunted by Vantage and recently installed. You may say that this couldn't happen here, but it happened right across the street from Vantage last Friday. Let me be clear, an accident like ABC Silicone or AB Silicone was just that, an accident. We lost three people that night. Three families are now preparing to bury their dead. An accident like that at either Vantage or Medline would mean the loss of hundreds within minutes and countless others within the following days and weeks. Speaking about ethylene oxide at the last county board member or the last county board meeting, Member Didak said that the public trust with the community had been broken and that it is up to those in government to make that trust whole again. To those newly elected aldermen here today, I say, "Do not be derelict in your duty and keep us safe and do not neglect the public trust we have placed in you."
Thank you. Les Steffner.
Good evening, Senate Council. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Les Steffner, citizen, resident, homeowner here in Waukegan. Um, I am also the chairman of the Lake County Libertarian Party. Um, I want to start off by saying, uh, to the, those outgoing, uh, aldermen who have, I want to say thank you for your service and your time and your leadership for this community. David and Lisa particularly. And, uh, to Alderman Tempest, congratulations on your retirement and your service to this, to the city. Couple, couple thoughts here. I want to just mention that, you know, we hear a lot from national media and national politics that the greatest, that the great threat to our modern democracy is outside interference from, from foreign entities. I don't think that's the case. Rather, instead, the greatest threat to our democracy is from within. When you have two major parties who will talk about getting, uh, getting money out of politics and then they will instead, at their, at the national and the local levels, continue to take money from other businesses and organizations. I think it's incredibly distasteful, nauseating and reprehensible that, uh, that our upcoming, uh, new city council, about half of them have been in some way influenced by, by outside monies, particularly from taproom gaming. It's, it's a shame. Now, as a libertarian, I'm, I'm a strong believer in economic freedom and businesses' right to pursue their interests. But I'm against crony capitalism. Libertarians, we have a problem when government officials, through their connections and backroom deals, start favoring one business over another. I think it's a shame. To those aldermen who have ran their campaigns and had the opportunity to accept, uh, funding and support from, uh, the various different political action committees backed by taproom and chose to go it on their own, I want to say thank you for your personal integrity. It means a lot. Thank you very much. And, uh, as a final thought, uh, you know, as a community, you know, as it relates to the explosion on Friday night, as a community, we need to rally around not only those who've just lost their loved ones, but the families who've lost their jobs and who are now wondering what next. So that we need to all keep in mind. To the incoming, uh, aldermen, please, take a deep look at what you choose to do. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Mayor, that concludes the audience time.
All right. Thank you. What you're probably gonna hear me today is use the poor alderman who will be leaving as the motions and everything, so bear with me. A motion by Alderman Timpas, second by Alderman May, to ratify the appointment, Nathan Hens, to the Waukegan Planning and Zoning Commission. Is Nathan in the audience? Sandra, thank you, Nathan. Thank you. All right. Are there any questions to the motion?
Do we have a resume on file? We do? Okay.
Yes, ma'am, we do. That, that's always on board docs, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, it didn't come up on mine, so it must be just me. Okay.
Okay, no problem. All right. Uh, roll call, please.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
A motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Villalobos, to proclaim May twenty-nineteen as National Community Action Month. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Item five, there have been no reports of communication. Item six, motion by Alderman Timpas, second by Alderman May, to approve the C D B G twenty-nineteen Action Plan Amendment. Are there any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Alderman, uh, we, we floated the idea of omnibus. Are we, is everyone okay with that? We'd like to take some of them out.
Take some of them out, please.
Which name am I?
Um, L, M, N and Z.
You said L?
M, N and Z.
And Z?
Yeah. Well, is that coming in late or?
Z?
Yeah, 'cause wasn't it an approval but for an event that already happened?
Raffle sales? You said Z.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's raffle sales.
Yeah. Which, we put them on the, on the agenda all the time.
Yeah, but was that not related to an event that already happened?
Yes. I'm, I'm saying, I'm saying yes.
Okay.
You wanna take it out?
Yeah.
Sure. All right. Omnibus. Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Villalobos. We're going to do an omnibus. Uh, and Corporate Counsel would explain what an omnibus is, please, so I don't confuse anyone.
We're just simply gonna vote on all, whoops. Turn my microphone on. We, the board or the council is simply going to vote on a, a group of ordinances, matters, motions, that are all presented on the agenda in one large vote, rather than vote on them individually.
Okay. There's gonna be a motion on the floor, there's a motion on the floor to do an omnibus for items, uh, from seven, eight through K. Items O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X. And Y. Thank you. All right.
Just for clarification, Your Honor, L, M, N and Z are out, correct?
Yes. We're gonna go, we're gonna take those on an individual basis.
Thank you.
Okay. I, I'm going to read the motions on, on, on the agenda, seven, A through K. I'm gonna read those now. Motion authorize proper city officials to settle police department workers' compensation claims. See, six-four-five dash seventeen dash one-zero-three-seven-four dash zero-one for the total amount of sixteen thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and twelve cents. Uh, B, motion authorize a proper city official to settle community development block grant liability claim. See, six-five-four dash seventeen dash zero, one-zero-three five-six dash zero-one for a total amount of nine thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-four cents. Item C, motion to approve zoning calendar two, two-five-eight-two, conditional use permit for a sports amusement complex at two-six-five-zero W. D. Road. Items D, motion to approve Waukegan firefighter request to hold a fundraiser filled with the boot for the Muscular Disability Association, May eighth, May twenty-eighth, twenty-nineteen, grant in Green Bay, Washington and Green Bay from nine AM to five PM, collecting donations at all stoplights. Items E, motion to approve Waukegan Police Department fundraiser on May seventeenth, twenty-nineteen, at the intersection of Washington and Green Bay Road from seven AM to ten AM. Items F, motion to adopt as presented ordinance for handicap parking spaces at two-twelve West Madison Street. Motion to adopt as presented ordinance for handicap parking space, twelve-fourteen Fulton Avenue. Item H, motion to authorize Building Commission to Retroactiveary approve a contract with W E B S Escavating Company, Inc., in amount of twenty-eight thousand for emergency demolition work completed relative three-eleven Ravine, three-fourteen South Genesee Street. Wave video cardless per city code, chapter two, article six, division two, section two dash four-five, uh, one, parentheses two. Item I, motion to authorize resolution authorizing certain agreements with Lakefront Beach concessionaries for twenty-nineteen season. Items J, approve, motion to approve payment waiver to Most Blessed Trinity Parish for Good Friday, uh, Living Stations of the Cross. Items K, motion to approve payment waiver, Most Blessed Trinity Parish, for youth ministry sidewalk, sidewalk. Again, skipping L, M and N. Items O, motion to approve vendor payments dated April thirtieth, twenty-nineteen, a total amount of one million, four hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-six cents. Items P, motion to approve regular payroll dated April twenty-sixth, twenty-nineteen, a total amount of one million, five hundred, five hundred and five thousand, thirty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. Items Q, motion to approve P B L C Holiday Cash that cash out payroll dated April twenty-sixth, twenty-nineteen, in a total amount of three thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents. Items R, motion to approve Local One-Fifty Comp Time Cash, Cash Out Payroll dated April twenty-sixth, twenty-nineteen, a total amount of one, a hundred and ten dollars and four cents. Items S, motion to approve All Union and Non-Union Sick Time Cash Out Payroll dated May third, twenty-nineteen, a total amount of three hundred and seventy, three hundred and seventy-three thousand, twenty-five dollars and sixty-three cents. Items T, motion to approve Fire Personnel Time Cash Out Payroll dated May third, twenty-nineteen, in a total amount of ten thousand, sixty-two thousand, fifty-seven cents. Items U, motion to approve Local One-Fifty Comp Time Payout Payroll dated May third, twenty-nineteen, in a total amount of three thousand, five hundred dollars and fifty-four cents. Items V, motion to approve P B L C MAP and MAP LT's Vacation Holiday Cash Out Payroll dated May third, twenty-nineteen, a total amount of fifty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars and ninety-five cents. Items W, motion to approve Mayor Approve Vacation Cash Out Payroll dated May third, twenty-nineteen, a total amount of four thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars and five cents. Items X, motion to approve Sergeant LT to Commander for Motion Cash Out Payroll dated May third, twenty-nineteen, a total amount of fifty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-three thousand, fifty-one cents. And Items I, motion to approve all block party applications. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Okay. Now, with Items I, we're, we're gonna start with item, I'm sorry, correction. Items L, Items L, motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman May, to approve waiver for noise exceed fifty decimals, five and a half, from three PM to ten PM for Mother's Day's Fest at Lakehurst Event. Questions to the motion? I'm assuming I-
Yeah.
Aldo- I'm Aldo- Alderman Taylor.
Um, because they don't have their security in place yet and they don't have, um, all of their permit requirements in, um, I am suggesting that this not be approved at this time. Um, so it is a Ninth Ward event and, you know, I'm not willing to approve something until I have all the permits in order. So that's, that's my objection to both L and M. And M, I believe, is something that we are talking about a rodeo at, which I didn't believe we had animals. I, I thought we had an ordinance against that, so that's, that's my concern. So.
All right. Typically, what we do, we, we do, we bring them to the council and before permit is issued, all of those things need to be in place. That's normally how we do this. So, so up here is, yes, it's okay with, with the understanding that those items that are, that we, that we need in order to approve are not met, we don't issue the permit, ma'am. That's what it, Alderman May.
Will an event allowed to occur without a permit issued? Will an event be allowed to occur without a permit issued?
No, we, we issue, the, the permit needs to be issued.
So you're saying if, if the permit doesn't, is not successfully, um, if they don't meet the conditions of the permit, you will not allow-
Yes, ma'am. Yes. That's, that's always been the, that's not, nothing new.
Okay.
So those requirements that we have in the application, the, the team looks at them and they go through them and make sure all of those, those items are met. And then we, then that's when the permit is issued. If not, then we go from there. But we try to work with the event holder. So what we're trying to do right now, particularly with the new process and, uh, there is, the application was brand new for everybody and we went through them. It was, I mean, went down right to the wire, particularly on this last one that I called all the aldermen on. But for future, what we want to do is get them on so they pass council, but permits are not issued unless those items are met. Okay, excuse me, sir. Thank you. So that's typically what we, what we've been doing in the past.
But one question, Mayor, real quick.
Yes, ma'am.
Does, because this is coming up now, does the public get a chance to voice about something where you're asking for a noise waiver? Because we're approving this now and once they get the permit, but like, residents don't even know about this, so will they get a chance? I mean, we're not having committee meetings tonight, so will they get a chance to voice concerns? That's my hesitation in voting on some of this.
What, what is the, what is the date on this?
It's Mother's Day.
Next Sunday.
Yeah, and, and again, that's one of the, one of the issues for today is to try to get it through our process here so we can then vet it through the other process. So I, while I hear what-
But the date is before the next city council meeting.
Right.
One of them is fine, but the other one is not. So that, that's my concern.
I mean, I think you had said something about rodeos. There's no livestock in the city of Waukegan, so that's not gonna happen.
Okay.
That's just, uh, so that aspect just won't happen now. Can they still call it a rodeo? Yes. Can they have livestock? No. That's just part of our, that's part of our elimination process and they've been instructed to do, that, they've been informed that that cannot happen anyway.
Okay.
So, while I, I, I hear what you're saying, I just want you to understand that whether we say yea or nay to this, a permit is not issued unless those items are, are met on our end through the, the vetting process that we have. And that's police, that's fire, public works, uh-
But I, my concern is when it comes to noise, I think residents should have a chance to be able to have an input. And we're not, in a sense, because of this date so quickly, we're not giving them that opportunity. So that's my hesitation.
All right, and I, and I certainly agree with you, um, from a noise standpoint. If there's gonna be outside events, that's something we probably need to take up from a bigger issue, particularly in, uh, at that location, all locations of, of all of our outside events, 'cause there's, what we try to do, what we really try to do is the timeframe. Keep it within that daytime and not go past, you know, that eleven, twelve o'clock. Yeah, that's earlier, certainly not past eleven in, in my book, but, so I think there's, there needs to be more conversation around, if we're talking about the noise, particularly with outside events in our community, and as we move to that, it's, it needs to be something we need to certainly talk about further beyond just this event or any other event.
Absolutely.
Um, and probably, and to your point, do we get public input about it? 'Cause these are, a lot of outside events are gonna happen.
And I, I, what I'm trying to prevent is people coming after the fact.
Yes.
And having the voice beforehand. And because these are coming to us kind of so quickly.
Yes, ma'am.
It makes it very awkward, so it, it puts me in a dilemma here, so that's why I-
And I can understand your situation. I know with our, with our, even our, even with our new application process, it is a little bit more lengthy than the past. That's why they're, they're vetting those and- that's why they're, they're vetting those, and, and one of the things I, I certainly want them i- is that safety and security measure to be first, if those things are not met initially, it was, but some of the smaller items, uh, that are, we call them non-safety and security issues, bring them so we can get them up here to you, and then we go through our vetting process.
It's like, for me, like, I don't know that the whole liquor license thing has been sorted out, there, I mean, we're just going through this process, and I understand it.
Yes, ma'am, ma'am.
So the first few are gonna be difficult.
Yes, ma'am, and I, and, and to the aldermen, I thank you for being patient with this, uh, this new application process is totally, totally different than what we've had in the past. Normally, it's a one cheater come in, say yes, with, uh, with all the events that are people coming to us right now, uh, outside and inside the community, we wanna make sure we have all of these, these steps in place. And we've, we vetted this by going to Naperville, Evanston, other cities, Chicago, and a host of others, and seeing what they have done, you know, you, listen, don't reinvent the wheel.
Right.
Look for some of the things that have been successful over there, bring them over here. But from our, for some of our, in the, for those who've done this in the past, this is a little bit more, and, and, you know, cumbersome for them, but we think, and I, we think, we know that this is a much better way of our liability and their liability as we move forward. But I do, I understand, you're, I've got Alderman, who said you're, Alderman Mozio.
Is there a, a time on the application process, 'cause that's what we're running into now, is this is coming to us, and, and I, and I agree with Alderman Taylor's point, that the community needs, uh, some input into these events, God, all, every alderman up here knows that we've had events that we didn't maybe quite vet as well, and then our phone is ringing off the hook because they don't know how to act right.
Yes.
And I think that's what we want to mitigate or eliminate for sure, is we do not, we want the, because there may be things that us, and, and I have all the confidence in our staff, that they try to dot every I and cross every T, but to Alderman's point, uh, Taylor's point again, there may be something that a resident may bring to us or to the city council, and say, hey, you, did anybody think about this matter? And we may say, well, no, so, uh, I don't know how we fix that, maybe we have to, if you wanna have an event in the city of Waukegan, you have to have it, I don't know what the time, what the date, was it thirty days, is it six, I don't know. That, maybe the staff obviously could tell us better what it would take for them to do that, but, um, I think we all want events, we all want the right events, we all want, uh, the public to have input, uh, but how do we flush all that out, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Our, our, our application has a sixty, has a, a sixty day to thirty day, that is, that is the ideal time, sixty day, thirty day. Uh, we're going through those applications who have been there for about a, a while, and we're vetting them, so that's why we're bringing them to you now. But to your point, yes, there is, there is a time standard on it, there's a sixty day, that, that is the, the real time we'd like to, to have those applications and look at. Unfortunately, these are the very first ones that we've received under the new application process.
And, you know, some of this is that there, people are not getting their, their step into us, as a city, so that we can't, so people have to learn this process, that, you know, it's gonna come down to, you need to get this done, and if you don't get it done, you won't have your event. And I, and I understand the first few are difficult, but I also don't wanna be in the position of saying to a resident, you didn't get an input on this because it was kind of put through because everything, we're, we're still sorting it out, and I don't want it to come back on council in any way, shape, or form. So, that's where my concern is, and only where my concern is, it's not that I'm against having the events at all, they're great for the city, it's just, we're working through this.
Yeah, absolutely, and it, it, you know, these concerns that everybody's bringing up, these are good ones. As we move to these outside events and become a more festival and destination, uh, these are the, the heartaches that you go through as you move through this process, but the more input that we get, as you say, the better off the pro- the, the events are going to be with, uh, and to your, to your point, Alderman Mozio, less phone calls that the alderman will, will receive.
For, um-
Alderman-
Thank you, ma'am.
Newsom.
Um, for item M, since it's not till the twenty-sixth, and we do have another meeting-
Right, can we put that off?
Can we hold that one until, uh, the next meeting to make sure they have everything in order?
Ah.
Um, and then we know that item L is, they're not gonna get their permit unless they-
Yes.
And I'm sure Ms. Catherine is not gonna-
Yeah, Katie's definitely.
I mean, yeah, Catherine, she's not gonna, um, approve it, if they don't have everything in order, so.
All right, so we're, uh, uh, item L, again, the permit will not be issued unless those items are in. Item M, we're gonna hold off until next council meeting, is that fine?
Yes.
Okay, so let's get that one out there. So, uh, uh, item M has been held over. Item L, uh, let's get a, there's, there's a motion on the floor, and Alderman Taylor, I understand your position, there's a motion, uh, motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman May, is that okay? Uh, Alderman May to, uh, approve a, a waiver of noise to exceed fifty, exceed fifty decimals, uh, on five twelve from three to ten, and mothers, for the Mother's Day Fest at Lakehurst Event, pending everything, uh, it gets in for, for permit. Any other questions, Alderman Taylor?
No.
All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
All right, um, motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Villalobos, to approve special event permit including liquor and waiver of noise to exceed fifty decimal, uh, five four casino, casino, Cinco de Mayo Festival, twelve eleven to eleven P M. in parking lot F and association, the Eventes Latinos for the Waukegan. Did I do that right, Margaret? All right, there's a motion on the floor, Ida, uh, uh, Alderman Taylor, did you have a question regarding that? Alderman, uh, May.
I'll let her go first.
All right.
So, this event took place on Saturday, and-
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Friday afternoon, as of Friday afternoon, I had asked the risk manager if it had been, a permit had been issued yet, and the permit had not been issued, so am I to understand the permit was issued before the event, event began on Saturday?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, and this event also included liquor, and a lick, when, uh, an event includes liquor, according to our ordinance, it's supposed to come to city council for, before being approved, that's correct, right, sir?
Yes, ma'am, and that's when I made phone calls to the alderman.
Okay.
Understatement, yes, ma'am.
And so, when we revamped the special events permit earlier, within the last year, um, most of the power was given to the mayor and his agent, the risk manager, to, to approve these, um, events unless they were to include liquor. I'd like to, um, propose to the new council, I won't be here, but I would propose to the new council that you bring the amendment back, that whenever they are on city property, that they come before you, before they're approved, not just with liquor, but when they're on city property, I think the city council should have a say on that, and that's, that's my only comments on the issue. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Alderman Taylor.
I just feel like if it's not approved by, you know, more or less late afternoon on Friday, and the event is happening on Saturday, and it's already happened, and now we're approving it, I, I do not wanna be in the position of approving events after the fact. So that's my only objection to it, um, you know, I hear things went okay, and that's fine, um, but I just don't wanna be in that position, and I understand, we're still working things out, I, I understand.
Mm-hmm, I just say, I, I, this is, listen, uh, your concerns are our concerns, the goal is to have a good event, and, and, and understanding what the other, the other goal is to start moving with events, so as we work through these particular situations, we're gonna have them, and that's why I was very, very, very specific as to, I needed to get in contact with the aldermen, I have reached out to Aldum, all of the aldermen, I understand what, what we're doing. This Cinco de Mayo, uh, celebration, uh, in my opinion, will kick off our festivals for the summer. We found a partner, we understand, they know our process, understand what our expectations are, so, uh, uh, being a, a little flexible, I'm, not only with the new process, but as we coach and prepare people for what Waukegan is going to be in the future, and that is what? A destination spot for people to come in Lake County, right here in Waukegan, more particularly in our downtown. Ma'am, thank you, ma'am, ma'am, please, ma'am, thank you, ma'am, please, thank you. That's where, that's where we're heading, and we're heading together, not separately, not apart, together. So, Alderman, if you hear things within your wards, ideas is gonna make this process better, bring them, they're not negatives here, these are positives.
Your honor.
This is the Waukegan that I think we must prepare people for. Alderman Mozio.
I would echo Alderman May's, uh, sentiment about bringing it, anytime it's on city property, I think we all need to know about it and vote on it. Again, we're, and I'm sure you are too, but we're the one who feels the phone calls about, did you know about this, and I don't like to be, to look stupid, as I'm sure no one else up here likes to be, so I would echo that, to bring that back into the ordinance that if it's gonna be on city property, whatever it might be, uh, it doesn't matter what it is to me, but that the Alderman, uh, the city council has to vote on it.
Yeah. And, and if I can be clear to the alderman, it was never intended for you not to vote on us, it just happened that way, that's why I made the phone call.
I get it.
But I agree, but to, one of the things I think, even when I was an alderman, whenever there were outside events, we all voted on. That has not changed, and it will not change, but what needs to, I think what we're, we're looking to do is make sure that we set an expectation that we're opening and welcome to events in our community. That's the message that I'm really trying to bring, and I trust that all the aldermen, whether it be the past or the present, that, that's where we're going. All right, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Since it's already happened, aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye, it doesn't matter.
Alderman May, no, Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item Z, motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Villalobos, uh, motion to approve all raffle sales application. Alderman Taylor, you had a question?
I, my only concern is that the event's already happened, and it's kinda like, I, I just don't like voting on things after they've happened. I know it's been three weeks since we had a meeting, but this should've probably been in before that, and, and again, this is getting our residents and, and other people to understand that.
Your, your honor, you might, and I mean, corporation counsel can maybe help me on this, but if I, if I remember right, this was something that came down from the state of Illinois, that the local municipality had to-
Yeah.
-approve all, whether it was the booster club, or whatever pancake sale-
So we don't have to worry about the dates now.
No, 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 this was, when we talk about, let's be clear about raffle, raffles like the raffle, the motorcycle, the hundred thousand, those are the raffles that comes through. What Alderman Mozio's talking about, there, there's a state law that says, any organization that does raffles, whatever, must, they must, um-
Get, get, must, get, have to get passed by the local, am I right, am I council-
They get a, a local, yeah, that's, that's what it is, so they're annual, so there's gonna be a lot of people coming annual to do those, that's what this is. This was not a raffle of what we consider a raffle to be, so I just wanna be clear on that.
Okay.
All right, so, that, are we, we're good?
We're good.
All right, all right. Motion Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman, who's it, of Villalobos, to approve all raffle sale applications. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Taylor.
Yes, or I.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
All right, ordinances, there being none, closing items. Alderman, Alderman's time, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Taylor. Um, I just wanted to take an opportunity to, um, express my sincere condolences to the families and friends who, um, were involved in this horrific accident this weekend. As I think all of us up here, um, this is the, the worst part of our job, and, um, I, I just, I, I can't express my thoughts on this, but I also wanna thank our police and fire departments who, man, without you, I, I don't know where we would be, so, um, not only to Waukegan, but to the other communities who came out and supported us, thank you, thank you, thank you, because what you do on a daily basis, and when you run in, most of us could never do it, so thank you. Again, it's just not enough words to express. I also wanna take this opportunity to thank the four aldermen who are leaving today. It has been a sincere pleasure to work with each and every one of you, and I've learned so much from each and every one of you, and, you know, it, why I will learn from the new aldermen, a part of my heart breaks tonight because I'm losing four really wonderful people, and I, I just want the city to know how hard they've worked, and everything they've brought to the table. I will say this, I don't, I know the, the three men, go and have a good cigar, Billy's here, he knows more about cigars than I do, but I will say, for my, my girl Lisa, as a, as a girl, every woman deserves a tiara in her life. It may not be the tiara that you just saw, but, but thank you to everyone, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Taylor.
I know. Alderman Bolton.
Pass.
Alderman Seager.
I too would take, uh, this, like to take this time out, wish my condolences to all the families over the weekend with this tragedy. I, I know I was there, along with the mayor, uh, Saturday and Sunday, and it was, it hurt. I know I worked in a boiler room, but I don't know their system, and what took place, and no, nobody else does. It was a tragedy, real one. My prayers go out to all the family members, my condolences, thank you.
Alderman Mozio.
Obviously, my condolences too, I mean, in this position, you get a phone call from the chief or a text from one of the chiefs at nine or ten o'clock in the evening, it's usually not good news, so that's always difficult. Uh, and, and of course, when they text you, they don't always have all the information, and in the age of social media, there's all kinds of things flying around, but it's, once you get all the information, it's, it's, it's hard to deal with as a community and as a town. So with that, my condolences to that, and then to the four aldermen who are, uh, going out, um, no one runs for this position, uh, without passion, which every one of them has, and, um, equally except for one, and that's the guy that's been here forty-four years.
God bless.
That's all I got.
Alderman Villalobos.
Yes, thank you, um, so, this is my last time speaking up here, uh, for this term, and, uh, obviously, for those who don't, don't know, I've spoken every time, opportunity to speak here, and I, I do wanna skin my condolences also for the tragedy that happened this weekend, but, um, it is sad, um, but our first responders perform wonderfully, um, coordinate everything, so I commend them for that. Um, just some exiting thoughts of mine, as I move on to the next chapter of my life. I'm still be part of this, um, my lifestyle is to be engaged in the community, I've been well involved with Waukegan for over a decade, which may not sound like a lot, but I'm thirty-seven, like, that's almost one-third my life, um, and so, I will be part of this still, I plan on being in city council meetings, I plan on being engaged, I've actually wanna see, uh, Riddell Kirkwood be successful, so we are, actually, I, we met once already, and we've committed to meet on a weekly basis, 'cause I wanna pour four years of knowledge into his brain, and, and again, the whole goal for me, and the whole goal really for everyone up here is to make Waukegan a better place to live in, and that happens by me sharing what I've learned to the incoming aldermen, to my successor, and so, um, please, the excellent aldermen too, speak to your successors, share with them, um, you have a vast amount of knowledge, um, as I reflected upon my four years in the seat, I realize that for four years, I've read primarily government documents, which means for four years, I'd just been learning what our government's about and how we operate and what we do here. There's very few citizens in this community, I would imagine, that have read every single document, um, and know all the stuff, so, um, there is a- So, um, there is a wealth of knowledge up here. And so, we need to be willing to share that. Um, I'm not gonna be stingy with my knowledge. I absolutely, I told Riddell, my goal is to make him better than me. Cause that's how we improve Waukegan. Every ward improves, the city as a whole improves. So, um, I wish the best to Riddell Kirkwood, Dr. Riddell Kirkwood. Um, I wish the best to everyone else that's leaving these seats. I wish the best to everyone that's staying in these seats. Um, you guys have some tough decisions to make going forward. I mean, that's gonna be every time, um, every time this comes up. There's always a tough decision to be made, so. Um, again, I thank all the people that, um, met with me, reached out to me, helped me, that I helped, I mean, it's been a wonderful experience for me. And as I reflect more now, it'll really start to sink, really what I was doing sitting in the seat. And the blessing that it really is to serve the community that raised you. And so, I think that's it. But again, you'll see me again. Thank you so much, everyone, appreciate it.
Alderman Newsome.
Thank you. I would like to offer my condolences to the families that were, uh, affected with the blast on Friday. Um, and to our first responders, thank you for being omnipresent to help. And Public Works as well, um, the role that you played. And, um, to those families that are still employed there, they don't have a job. So my prayers for them and the company, that they can rebuild, and their lives can be restored, um, with employment. And to the outgoing Aldermen, it's been a pleasure working with you. Up here, um, Alderman May, eight years. The other, um, Villalobos, Alderman Villalobos, Alderman Valco, eight years. And Alderman Villalobos, four years. And to Alderman Tempest, I guess I can say, I'm kinda like in this seat because of you. When you knew that the retiring, um, Alderman Frank Harris was retiring, you had, um, I guess, you and my husband, uh, I can say that I'm here because of you both. Uh, knew that he was retiring, and you told him to go into the ward and find someone to run for the seat. Um, little did you know, he was coming home to look. He came home and looked, and, um, and as I campaigned, um, you found out what my maiden name was. Uh, Hunter. And you had known my parents since the middle sixties. So at that time, you gave me your blessing. And you brought me in, and you helped me, you mentored me. You knew that the Alderman that was sitting here had tried to get a traffic signal at Butrick and Glen Flora. You helped me my first year to get that in the budget, so that, uh, you could take care of that. You gave me a lot of your, um, knowledge and wisdom on how to really serve your constituency. And that was evident when we did the, um, redistricting. And I met with some of your constituents that became my constituents. And when I went to meet with them, they told me, no, no, Alderman Tempest is my Alderman. I said, no, um, I'm, you know, you're now in the fifth ward, not the sixth ward. But, um, after a couple of years, and me following your tips and your little secrets that you gave me, they came to realize that, um, I was able to serve them almost as well as you did. Only thing, I wasn't climbing any trees to get any cats out, or I wasn't going in any attics to get raccoons or anything like that. I couldn't do that. But, um, I just really, really appreciate everything that you've shared with me. Um, I appreciate all your service to this community and to your ward. And I just pray that you are blessed with many more years of taking care of yourself, since you have taken care of so many, many people. And we're blessed to know you. Thank you.
Alderman Tempest, it's your time. You get to talk.
Well, I've been around a long time, I guess.
Three minutes only, please. Three minutes only?
No, as long as you want.
Oh, the mayor has to say that, not you. You got the floor. He's the mayor, you know. Well, it's been an honor to be able to serve all these years, it really has. Waukegan, did you know I went to high school there? Got to go to Illinois, only because I was a wrestler, that's the only reason I went there. And, but then I'm able to teach and coach at our great city, Waukegan. What a great city we really have. And what great athletes we've produced over the years. What a blessing, that's what serves Alderman. I love going door to door, I love knocking on your door, seeing how you are. Be sure and vote for me, I'm, I love the politic, I really do. But I love to help people. And being an Alderman, and the way you survive, the rest of you, is serve your people. I mean, they need somebody that they can count upon for answers and help. Yeah, I think that's why I've survived many, many years. And I look forward to the new Alderman taking over, I'm very happy for, for Keith. He's gonna do a great job for us, he really is. Uh, he's dedicated, his wife walks the ward, probably more to him, but, uh, you know, we all have to answer those anyway, right? So, that's a good partner he has, or it really is. And I know, we're blessed that we have such a good replacement taking my place. And I really wish him very well, I, I mean it sincerely. And I have my lovely daughters here, and I guess all three, Diane's adopted daughter, here tonight, so it's so nice to see them here. And it's, it's been great to serve the city. And what a blessing I've had in my life. Being able to teach school, uh, you know, coach kids, which I love to do. And enjoy going to work every day. Not everybody can say that, huh? So I've been blessed. And I look forward to kinda helping Sam out once, the mayor. Kinda Sam to me, but you are the mayor. The Mayor Sam, I better call him Mayor Sam, that sounds better, no. I'm sure I'll be able to help him out a little bit. We're blessed that we have him as mayor, we really are. And, uh, I'm so glad for the city that we have such a great leader. And it's great to have somebody in charge like, like Sam. And I appreciate you, Sam. At least I'm done.
Are you finished?
Yeah, I'm finished. I hope that's all.
Alderman May.
Thank you. I'd like to echo my colleague's sentiments and offer my sympathies to the family, friends, and coworkers of the horrific accident on the northwestern corner of our city over the weekend. And, um, thank you to our first responders. You run in when everyone's running out, and we recognize that, so thank you very much for your service. I wrote my Alderman's time tonight.
Oh, here's my, here it is. Because it's my last time, and I, um, think it's a great privilege to be able to, um, address the city council twice a month, and address the city in this manner. So, I'm going to read mine. "I've been struggling with the right words to say tonight as I step down from office. I've been writing this speech in my head for weeks as I'm running through the ward in the early morning and reflecting on my time serving. While I realize eight years may seem minute compared to the forty-five years of my colleague, Alderman Tempest, serving as Alderman has been one of the most significant experiences of my professional life. I dove into my role from day one with a commitment that was full-time, and I eagerly took my, eagerly took my position on the council. It has been a great honor to serve the people in the city I've called home since birth, in the same neighborhoods where my parents still live, and a handful of my child, childhood friends still reside. We love Waukegan, we love our neighborhoods, and we believe that a brighter future really is possible. Being Alderman was not about seeking power or esteem. Being an Alderman has always been about serving the people of the seventh ward, promoting the city that I love, and being a voice for the residents who need to be heard. There are far too many people to thank individually. So many city employees and elected officials, including everyone sitting up here, have enriched my tenure while serving as Alderman. I couldn't possibly list everyone by name. I do wanna thank Mayor Bob Sabanjin Jr., who welcomed me in such an open manner, allowing me access to information and learning opportunities in abundance after I was first elected. This introduction to city government allowed me to forge professional relationships throughout the departments that have served me well over these years. We have folks working here that have decades of knowledge and expertise. My most sincere thanks and gratitude to all of you. I also wanna give a special shout-out to Officer Laney Newman, who is the seventh ward neighborhood policing officer. Laney is one of the most dedicated and committed cops I have the pleasure of knowing. She is part of the fabric of the seventh ward, a well-known presence on our streets, and someone who really cares about preserving our neighborhoods. Laney was always eager to grow the Neighborhood Watch program, and is known at our neighborhood schools. So thank you Laney, you always made me so proud, and you always made me look so good. The people of the seventh ward are some of the most amazing, dedicated, and generous folks I've had the pleasure to know. We have residents who serve on volunteer boards, lead nonprofit organizations, and serve as elected representatives in city, township, and countywide offices. And then we have the unsung heroes that lead community service events. They volunteer and raise money for those who are less fortunate. And we have mentors that give their time to our youth to ensure a better future. We have families that have been here for several generations. And we have new young families that recognize an outstanding quality of life and friendly neighborhoods in the northeastern section of our city. I cannot express my gratitude sufficiently. It has been a pleasure to serve you. I am proud to have been a strong advocate for our lakefront since day one, and I will continue to do so in the future. We cannot let corporate polluters continue to take advantage of our residents, and we must ensure that the lakefront is protected for generations to come, and accessible to the general public in perpetuity. I am proud to have been a watchdog over city finances and policies to ensure our tax dollars are used efficiently, and our residents are treated fairly. Good government is the key to our progress, and I will continue to advocate for professional practices. And finally, I am proud of my work on the Judiciary Committee to bring sensible legislation to protect our most vulnerable residents, especially as it pertains to video gaming in Waukegan. As a citizen, I pledge to continue to fight against the corporate interests that want to control our city, using the dollars they've taken out of our own residents' pockets via the almighty video gaming terminals. I am not blind to the boost that was given to our small business owners, and that is why I did support the licenses on the onset. But this council must listen to the residents as we shape the future of Waukegan, and how gambling will affect us all. My final thank you goes out to my family and friends, who have endured countless hours of discussions on policy, projects, and issues that face the city of Waukegan. Especially my dear husband, Michael May, who you've rarely seen, seen in this audience, upon my request, but he's here tonight. But has been my rock through elections, late Monday nights, and everything in between. This seat has never belonged to me. This seat belongs to the residents of the seventh ward. The time has come for me to take my leave, and I feel confident that our next Alderman will continue the decades-long legacy of strong voices and leadership from the seventh ward on this council. Congratulations to Alderman-elect Felix Rivera, and everyone on the council on their recent elections. Godspeed to each and every one of you.
Alderman Valco.
Thank you ma'am. First off, uh, I'd like to say, uh, I'd like to recognize, uh, certain supervisors that have helped me within the last eight years of my service here in the city. Not gonna mention all the clerks, not gonna mention all the secretaries, but in the last eight years that I've been sitting up here, I have not had one problem with any city employee. But there are many, and I'm gonna try and keep it brief, cause we're already a half an hour over. There are many that, uh, I, I wanna mention. I'm gonna take the first four right off the bat together, cause they work together. Noel Kishler Lepa, Steve Sauber, Russ Tomlin from Planning and Zoning, and Mike Portell from the Building Department. Thank you guys for any time a new business was coming in, especially into the ninth, into the, uh, the eighth ward, that we'd call, you'd call me in, and we'd have meetings, and we'd discuss the pros and the cons of a new business coming in. Mike Hewitt, Public Works Director. And Pat hardly ever comes, so give him my thanks also, sir, for the times that, I've been bugging you for the past two years since you've been here. I wanted stuff done. I've advised you all the time, of all the phone calls that I got, when are we gonna get stuff done? And I have to tell you, sir, that I got six phone calls last week. The stuff was done. And I went up there, Beach Road is completely done, DeWitty is completely done, Pine, Linden is completely done, into the Waukegan city limits, not into the township. And then, uh, some other works being done in Tewas Farms Estates. So, I'm sorry that I bugged you all these years, but I'm happy to see that it's done, and just, from the residents, thank you, okay? Chief Rawls, from the Police Department, Chief Bridges, from the Fire Department. I'd be hard-pressed in my forty-three years with the city to find two chiefs that have the, more respect from their men and the women than you two have. As some of these Aldermen up here said today, thank you for, um, the, for your responses to the explosion. Uh, I went out there, and I won't go into what, uh, what was being done out there, but to see our men and our women out there directing traffic, search and rescue, recovery, I wanna thank you very much. Chief, uh, both chiefs, I wanna thank you because there were many times that we've spent numerous meetings together working on manpower, equipment, building, and thank you for taking the time out of your days to help me along and, and see what had to be done in your respective departments. Yeah, I'm looking at you. Tina Smogalsky. You are probably the one that I've worked closest with since I've been here as an Alderman, especially the last four years as Finance Director. We've worked hard on the budget, appropriations, the tax levy, and the audits. And I've learned quite a bit from you ma'am, and thank you for taking your time. Thank you for teaching me of what some of the knowledge that you have. Thank you very much. David Motley, I know you're in here somewhere. The hardest, one of the hardest-working individuals for the city. I'm sure the other Alderman can attest to the fact also, getting phone calls at two o'clock in the afternoon on a Saturday, nine o'clock at night on a Sunday, of what's going on in the city, what happened, what transpired, and keeping us all abreast. Corporation Council, Bob Long. Thank you for all the time and effort that you and I have been in your office, around the phone, helping me along to negotiate through some of these ordinances with this, from the city, and your expertise and your knowledge, sir. Finally, Mayor Cunningham. When you first were elected, sir, to the position of mayor, you and I had some healthy discussions. We had some healthy fights up here about what you wanted to do, and that what I didn't think was appropriate at the time, either fiscally-wise, or just wasn't right. After the first couple of months, I requested a couple of meetings. We sat down, sir, for, for two meetings in an hour apiece in your office. And we worked things out. And we found out that we're pretty basically on the same page with everything. So thank you for your time in those meetings. Thank you for your consideration on stuff that I proposed. And thank you for just being Mayor Cunningham, and hopefully you'll proceed. And hopefully, you'll proceed further in your endeavors. Thank you very much, sir. And that's all I have.
All right, those are the... I don't know what to do. Motion. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman May, to adjourn. All of those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Now, real quick, give us about two minutes, Janet.
If you'd like.
Five minutes, ma'am. You know better.
All right, give us five minutes. And we're going to start the next... Does everyone have the other swear... It's a swearing-in ceremony for today. Give us five minutes and we'll go.